One of the big debates in North Dakota right now is whether or not we're, we should have a special session. Some people believe we should. I am frankly, one of them. I've been calling for a special session since March. Because of, you know, precipitated frankly by the COVID-19, the coronavirus pandemic. Now, the North Dakota Democrats now also, the Democratic Party group of Democratic lawmakers have come forward and said, "Hey, we need a legislative session. We need to address some things right now. A special session. So let's get going." Republican leadership in the state saying, "No, we don't need one." That includes leadership in the legislature, majority, House Majority Leader Chet Pollitt, Senate Majority Leader Rich Wardner saying, "No, we don't need them." Governor Doug Burgum frankly saying, "We don't need them." Although my, my guest now, House Minority Leader Josh Moshe, and one of the aforementioned Democratic lawmakers who wants a special session. I was real surprised that Doug Burgum not wanting the legislature to come into session. I feel like, and, and not even just Burgum. I feel like most governors are probably happy when the legislature's out of town, right? I mean, that's just kind of built into the whole executive legislative branch thing.
Absolutely. Yeah. Well, and you know, in all honesty, we do have a weak executive in North Dakota. The legislature for years has slowly chipped away and taken on more and more, or taken more and more away from the executive branch in terms of even their ability to be flexible with some funding in the interim. So I understand that. And you know, in, in our call for the special session isn't even a, a critique of the governor and the decisions being made with the funding. It's about our responsibility as a legislative assembly. Our job, the 141 legislators elected throughout the state of North Dakota, is to appropriate funding and make sure that funding is getting to where it needs to go. And, and that's our primary argument with this is there's, you know, and I think you've highlighted it too. There's 14 legislative districts that don't have any representation on, on the budget section. My legislative district has two votes with Representative Hanson and myself getting a vote on that committee. So there's some inequity there in terms of when we talk about legislative input and how legislators are involved in the process. We think that legislators need to be even more involved, especially when we're talking about 1.25 billion dollars.
Even if you have a lawmaker from your district on there, it may be just one. We elect three lawmakers from districts for a reason. I mean, oftentimes the lawmakers, even, even of the same party within a legislative district, can have very different governing philosophies. So it's, I, I, I think you're right. I really, this is an argument, it's about process over policy. That's how I'm looking at it. Right now, the, the debate for a special session isn't really about policy. It's not saying we should do this instead of this. It's saying, "This is how we should decide." We have some very weighty decisions in front of us to make and the whole legislature should be a part of it.
Especially based on this sum money, you know, the, the emergency commission process is set up for the state to receive, you know, funding when the National Department of Health passes new funding and they're going to send it down to the states. And it's a way to receive kind of those small grants. And by small, I mean sometimes tens of millions of dollars. But it's a way to receive that money and say, "Yep, we didn't plan for it a year and a half ago, but it's coming now. Let's put it to use in North Dakota." But we're talking about 1.25 billion dollars. That's a quarter of our two-year general fund budget. So that's just a lot of money coming to the state and going out with, you know, the best of intentions from the governor and the executive branch, but very little oversight in terms of the legislature having a say in how and what type of programs are being created. What does this mean for long-term ongoing spending? You know, the caveat is this money has to be spent by December 31st of this year. So are we starting new programs that then we have to inherit in the next session and figure out how to fund? We want to be a part of those conversations on the front end to make sure that if that's the case, we're setting them up with the understanding that we're committing to more long-term investments as well.
Right. And, and again, you know, the, the budget section has, has people, the, the budget section is, for people who don't know, is an interim committee that, that really sort of manages the state's finances from the legislative perspective during the interim. It's a very large committee. It's 43 members, right? 43? Can I get that right? I think it's 43.
I, I believe about, yeah.
Yeah. So it's about 43. So I mean, it's a big committee, but still, it's not the whole legislature. And as you said, you know, if, if, if we don't convene the whole legislature, with this federal money coming in in particular, you're right, we could have, we could have a small subsection of the state legislature make decisions that then the full legislature and obviously the state and the taxpayers has to live with down the road. If we're going to do that, again, this is very consequential policymaking. If we're going to do that, should involve the whole legislature.
Absolutely. Because even the vote to the budget section is an up and down vote. It's not a, "Well, we'd like to reallocate 5 million that you have for this program over to this other program." It is accepting what the emergency commission, which is chaired by the governor, and certainly there's four legislators on there, but approving what they decide. So it's not even a deliberation in terms of where the funding will go or if it's being put appropriately.
Well, because, because from a constitutional, I'm sorry, from a constitutional perspective, the budget section can't legislate, right? I mean, they, they, they couldn't. If they started trying to go beyond up or down, well, now they're legislating. And if the legislature wants to legislate, then the whole legislature's got to be there.
Correct. Yep. And we've had, you know, fights with the executive branch as soon as, or as far, as close back as, as two years ago.
Right.
You know, over the governor's veto and what the budget section can and can't do. Yeah. You know, and, you know, and I, I was very clear with the governor's office yesterday. Again, this is not a critique of necessarily the governor and his engagement of those of us of legislative leaders. He's, he's done a good job. We've, we've been a part of some of these conversations. But I started looking at the money and now in the second tranche of 400 million. And then I got to go back to my caucus and explain it to them and they have questions and they have stakeholders in their districts. I mean, the deliberation isn't happening. There's certainly some good ideas moving forward and some ideas that maybe we question. But that's the role of the legislature, to deliberate, to understand what's best for our communities. Because we have very diverse communities throughout the state. And so to have just the ideas funneling up through the capital isn't representative of that.
I, um, a part of, I, because I was, I was calling this before we, we had the CARES Act funding. I mean, I was back in March, I was saying, "We got to get ready for this." And part of the reason why is, you know, we may still have social, I mean, I don't know what things are going to look like come time for the regular session next year. You know, we may still have social distancing guidelines. So part of it was, "Hey, let's plan. What are the next, what is, what is the next regular session going to look like? Do we need to put in place some rule changes or, or legal, you know, changes to the law to accommodate maybe, maybe doing the session in a different way while still obviously respecting the, the process?" And also I think financially, you know, I, I keep hearing Majority Leader Pollitt saying, "Well, we don't have a forecast yet." Right? So we don't know what, 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 well, listen, uh, the forecast takes what? A couple of weeks to do? If, if, if you've gotten the ball rolling, we could have a forecast in, in hand now, right? We could, we could do this now, or at least a picture. And obviously forecasting in this environment is probably, glad I don't have to do it. But, you know, again, we could have numbers. I mean, I'm, I'm looking, the, the Office of Management and Budget just put out their, their monthly revenue report today. And I'm looking at some of the figures and this, this is compared to the legislative forecast that you folks use to, to budget. And sales tax collections in the month of May, down 35%. Individual income tax collections in the month of May, down 65%. You know, overall revenues in the month of May compared to legislative forecasts, down 19%. That's a problem. And I, I feel like, you know, instead of being reactive and sitting around and waiting to see what happens, right? I mean, Senate Majority Leader Wardner saying, "Well, you know, we'll just finish out with their current appropriation levels. We'll figure it out next year. Let's be proactive. Something, you know, unprecedented terrible's happening. Let's get the legislature involved and be proactive about this."
Absolutely. And again, that's our, that's our responsibility is to, to not only plan for the future, but to respond to the situation we're in. And, and you know, there's been plenty of debates over the last decades in terms of our constitutional limitations as far as how and when we can meet. But there's even conversations about that. When a governor calls an emergency, should there be something in the constitution that says that the legislature can also convene itself? And that doesn't count against its 80 days, or you get 10 extra days to meet the emergency? You know, those, these are conversations we should be having now, not once this is passed and said, "Well, in 25 years or something like this happens again, then we'll be prepared for it."
Yeah.
You know, I, I think of even the, the conversation in you, who is an advocate for transparency in government. I assume have been supportive of the fact of we should be live streaming more of our meetings. We should be more accessible as a capital. The dragging of feet for the last 10 years on just outfitting rooms with cameras. Now we're fast forwarding that for good because we have to prepare for this next spring session. But this could have been in place years ago.
Yeah.
And we would have just been upgrading systems to meet the needs. And, and so it's again, you know, I think, you know, I love us being a citizen legislature. I love coming home for most of my term and being with my neighbors and friends. But we have to do a better job of thinking forward and not being afraid of doing new things and, and doing things different than they've been done before. And I think that's one of the things me and many of the members of my caucus agree with this governor on is we can govern differently. We can provide services differently and have a philosophy of government that, you know, not only saves taxpayers' monies, but is more efficient in how it solves problems. And, and that's part of us calling this special session. Let's look at bonding. Let's free up some of that cash. When we're, when we have, you know, 35% less in revenue coming in, let's, let's not necessarily go cut, you know, human services 5% so we can get to the budget stabilization fund. Let's go in, let's bond, free up some cash and reallocate a little money. So we don't have to do that.
So something that has frustrated me because I, I, I think there's a, there's an attitude among, and I'm, I'm speaking here as a conservative, right? So I'll try to interpret some of this for your progressive mind. But, but speaking as a conservative, there is an attitude among some Republicans that think it is conservative to oppose, to, to sort of just mire government in the mud. And I'm not sure that's true. I, I want government that's, that's small and efficient, right? Like I don't, I don't, I don't want it to do, I mean, make you, and I mean, that's obviously the, the great political divide and whatever. I, I, I think sometimes the government could do a lot less, less with more, you know, that's sort of the argument I want to make. But I don't want to make it inefficient. And I think sometimes there is an attitude, frankly, I think it's why longtime, you know, sort of budget guru Jeff Delzer, I think part of it, I think that's part of why he lost in District 8 is because his approach to this stuff was just sort of, "Well, we'll hide the money. We'll pretend like we don't have the money and that'll be the fiscally conservative thing to do. Because if people don't know we have the money, or if we sort of hide it in the budget, it won't get spent." And that frustrated me because no, we should be transparent about the money we have. And then fiscal conservatives should articulate a fiscally conservative plan for what to do with that money, whether it's tax cuts or, or we're going to spend it or whatever, whatever it is we're going to do. You know, I, it's, so I, I think there's an attitude among some Republicans is just, "Well, if, if we convene the legislature, then the legislature is going to do a lot of stupid things. So we shouldn't convene the legislature." And I'm over here saying, "Guys, the legislature is controlled by Republicans. What are you afraid of?" Right? I mean, you, I mean, I mean, no, no offense, Josh, you guys can't do much. The Democratic caucus really can't do much in the legislature, right? Without getting some Republicans on board. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what they're so afraid of. It's very frustrating to me. If, if you're that afraid of, of how you guys are going to govern if you come into session, then maybe we ought to look at electing some different people.
Absolutely. You know, or think differently about, you know, we, you and I earlier talking about the fact that there's three representatives, uh, two representatives and a senator in each district. Uh, we're pretty overrepresented. That's three people for 14 and a half thousand people. You know, most states you're looking at 50,000 plus for one representative. So is it that we have a smaller legislature? That's one way that we reduce government. So you have more expertise in, in, you know, so there's, I mean,
I can understand how that's appealing from the Fargo perspective. People, people out in rural North Dakota might be saying, "Well, I don't know about that."
That's a good point. Yeah. District 39 gets even bigger then and, and that's tough. But, uh, but yeah, you know,
We have, we have, we have Western, we have,
Who've been in charge of the Republicans.
We have Western lawmakers who are already governing a districts that are like the size of Connecticut, right? With no staff, no real budget, you know, that's already a problem. So let's, let's not get carried away. Let's, let's not go down that, that rabbit hole though. Okay. Special session. It's, it's not just about, I mean, obviously the CARES Act funding is very important. And I agree with all of that. Not just about that though. You know, obviously Governor Burgum's made some, some very big policy changes. We have looked at, you know, all sorts of areas like occupational licensing, liquor licensing. You know, this, the coronavirus has impacted a lot of the ways we do business, a lot of the ways we live our lives. Do we need to, to enshrine some of that in statute, right? And, and again, I think Governor Burgum's done a great job of, of trying to, you know, to, to balance the realities of public health with the realities of, we also got to live our lives. And I think he's doing his best, but we have a legislative process for, for enshrining. So I, I really think some of that stuff should be reviewed. I think a special session is the appropriate place and we can look, maybe we need to enshrine some of this stuff we've changed in, in statute. Um, or tweak it a little bit. I mean, these are all debates we could have right now.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, and they're pertinent right now versus what we need to talk about next spring, which would be probably completely different conversations along with some of these things. But, um, yeah, we have to be a responsive government. And that doesn't mean, you know, necessarily a, a bigger government. But again, representative of the neighborhoods and the communities and the counties that elect us to make sure that those voices are being heard out in Bismarck as these policy changes are made or appropriations are being, uh, being sent out. And, and so, yeah, for, you know, as you said earlier, this is a process argument. And us as a caucus, uh, you know, all the way back to the first emergency meeting and the budget section meeting, you know, Senator Heckman and I said, you know, "We recognize this money is needed in our communities. We want to support families and, and small businesses and, and our farmers." So, but we're still uncomfortable with the fact that we're passing 525 million dollars with a small group of 43, or whatever the number is on budget section. And so it's just now where it's getting again to where we're hearing from cities and counties who are saying they're having to reduce their budgets by 20% or more. You have farmers talking about township roads that are completely washed out, that they can't even get last fall's crop out of the field. And the answer is, "Well, we'll wait for FEMA money for that." Well, no, we can set our own destiny. And that's, that what, that's what makes us unique is North Dakota. We're small, we can be nimble. We have resources like the Bank of North Dakota and the Legacy Fund to bond against. And, and let's do it. Let's, let's be innovative now. Use this disruption to figure out how do we take care of our communities? And make sure that as we come out of this public health crisis, all our communities are stronger. Not just Fargo, not just Bismarck, but all communities.
One thing, I, because I'm, I'm sure you've heard it. I hear legislators complain all the time about executive branch overreach, sometimes fairly, sometimes maybe not so fairly. They complain a lot about federal overreach, right? Again, maybe a lot of time, I was a conservative, a lot of times I think fairly, sometimes not so fairly. It, that's another thing that frustrates me is, "Well, the federal government overreaches, but we're also going to sit back on our laurels and let FEMA take care of everything?" You know, or we're, boy, we're really tired of, of the executive branch dipping their toe in places they, I mean, we just had that where people were upset with Governor Burgum getting involved in legislative races across the state. But here you have an opportunity to come in and, and into a session and act as that check on executive power that you're supposed to be. And there's, there's just resistance to it. I, I don't understand it. I mean, it's again, this is not about Republican versus Democrat. We have a Republican governor and a Republican majority in the legislature. It's, it's not a partisan argument. It's a process argument. This is the way our government is supposed to work. Let's talk, uh, one, one, one common complaint I hear about coming to special sessions, the expense. People are saying, "It costs so much to do. We have another session. We have a regular session coming up in six months. Why now?" What's, what people, people making that argument? What's your response to them, Josh?
Well, yeah, there's certainly a cost to it. And that cost actually would probably be greater, greatly reduced if we're doing a remote session. We're not paying lodging and mileage, probably just daily per diem. But CARES Act funding can cover some of that. There's administrative authority within there, whether it's the Office of Management and Budget having to hire more people or contract with someone else to, to track this money. So I think a strong argument could be made that the funding of a special session would also be covered under the CARES Act funding. So it, I'm not too worried about that cost, especially knowing that us as legislative leaders, I think would have a good agreement on what a special session would look like. We do not want it to become unwieldy where there's 100 bills introduced to pet projects. And certainly that'll be the prerogative and the right of legislators. But we have a process within the legislative assembly to make sure those bills are heard. And then we go through and focus on the priority. Just look at what we did last session. In 76 days, we passed a record number of legislative bills. I shouldn't say passed, we, we dealt with. And that was because us four leaders worked well together. We were working primarily with the executive branch. We were efficient with our time. We got stuff done and we went home and we have four days left that we could call ourselves in to maybe pass some of this legislation or to have conversations publicly about where this money is going. So I think it can be done. We've worked well together with the majority party and the executive branch. So I don't know what the fear would be from there in terms of bringing legislators back. But, um, we are hopeful that again, we can take care of our, our communities and our counties and our townships through a process such as bonding, or if there's another idea out there, let's debate it. Let's have a conversation, but the need's there and that's our responsibility.
And I, I, again, I, I think of your, your colleague Senator Matherne, who has joined your call for a special session. He mailed me this morning and was, 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 you know, laying out some of the, and again, I, I almost didn't even want to get into that so much. You know, some of the proposals for the CARES Act, because again, this argument we're having now is not about the policy. It's not about, "Well, we ought to do this with CARES Act funding and not this." I just wanted to have that debate the proper way. Speaking of which, a moment ago, you just talked about having a remote session. And that's probably something we should bring up is we do still, I realize in the last few weeks, especially with some of the Black Lives Matter protests, some of that stuff's kind of got out the window. And I think Americans who have been shut up for a while, North Dakotans obviously as well, are, are just sort of, "Well, let's move on." You know, that's over. I, I think that's, that's a pretty common attitude out there. But the reality is we're still supposed to be social distancing. If the legislature comes into session, I mean, how, how would you imagine that working? I mean, tell me, how, how, how would you imagine a remote session working?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I think there are facilities in Bismarck that are not used right now. So whether it's Bismarck Civic Center or another space on one of the college campuses that we could spread out to meet social distancing, so we're at least still there. To, you know, because all those side conversations and those interactions are important. But the other option would be maybe you have some regional centers and we're all beaming in. You know, there's a southeast corner of the state that's beaming in at the same time as the northwest corner. And, and that's one way that we're making sure that we're engaged with each other in, in its smaller factions. But, you know, legislative assemblies throughout the country have been doing this for the last three months. It's not new. We're just behind in the technology ability to do it. And by September, it's my understanding that Legislative Council will have the rooms available if we were to be meeting in both, in the Capitol, but even some capability if we met remotely. You know, this, the, the, the state government has funded the Ivan network for higher education and K-12 well past the last decade. So every county courthouse, every college, almost every K-12 institution or school has, is connected. So we have those resources already there that we could tap into. So whether it's a legislator beaming in from their farmstead or from their business, or everyone getting together at the local school and spreading out and, and doing video capability there with rural broadband, we can do it. We, those are the investments we've made and we should take advantage of.
Yeah. And, and you know, a lot of the, um, you know, if, if you and I are, are having a private conversation over Zoom or something, you know, obviously we want some level of security, but I mean, it's not like this has to be super, these are public discussions about public business. It's not like we want to protect them against disruption and hacking and stuff like that. But I mean, generally we want the public to see this stuff too. So I mean, it's, it's not like this is some big, you know, top secret needs to be, have multiple layers of security. It's, um, I, I don't think it would be that hard to do, like you said. Do we need to change anything with the laws? And I guess I haven't even looked at the statutes. Like if there's any, anything in there particular about, you know, how the legislature meets, like where they have to meet, things like that. I mean, it's, is it a requirement that you meet in Bismarck or can you meet in other parts of the state? I, I don't, I don't know how that works. Do we need to change that law?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. I haven't paid attention to that part of it. It's been in a memo from Legislative Council. But, uh, I know the one issue we've had to address, and the governor did it through executive order, was suspending, um, you know, public meetings. We have, you have to have a physical location for people to be able to go to. And so, you know, I think for us to go in and make sure that we loosen that up a little bit. So cities and counties and, and whatnot can, um, can meet distantly. But also that increases access. If all of a sudden the county courthouse is, is allowing people to beam in from the other side of the county to support or oppose an idea. And that's going to increase folks' involvement and engagement with their local governments as well as state governments. So I think we're going to see a lot of good come out of this in terms of how we allow the public to interact with our policymakers.
Yeah. No, I, I agree with that. I think if we could get more meetings online and, and also allow participation from the public, from people online. Although again, you know, uh, I don't know that, you know, I, you worry sometimes about people getting, you know, opening up a, a city council meeting to the internet. And I mean, you're going to get some weirdo from Oregon or something who wants to chime in. I mean, how much time do we need to dedicate that? I, I say weirdo from Oregon, like I'm against people from Oregon. I didn't mean it that way. But, um, you know what I mean? There's weird people on the internet. That's what I'm talking about. So anyway, but yeah, there's a lot of those discussions. And again, I mean, that's another way in which the legislature could act and say, you know, Governor Burgum's done a lot of great things with executive orders, but they're executive orders. And I don't want to govern by executive order. Sometimes we have to in extreme situations. But generally we have a process set up for this stuff. Let's use it. Next up, Josh, I mean, you guys have put out your call. What happens next? I mean, you, you, you put out your call, Governor Burgum, who has the authority to call the legislature to session, has said no. The majority leaders of, of, of the legislature have said no. Legislature, obviously you have what? Four days left remaining? You can call yourselves into session to use those remaining four days of your 80-day allotment. But they've said no. So it kind of seems like that's the answer. You guys called for a special session. The people who could make that happen have said no.
Yeah. So, you know, I reached out to Representative Pollitt after our press conference. And we had a short conversation about it and he shared his thoughts. And, you know, so I think it continues the discussion. What I can tell you is in the last 24 hours since doing this, uh, press conference, a variety of industry groups have reached out with saying, "Hey, if we're going to bond or if we're going to do this, or we're going to get, you know, there's interest from groups that could
Sure.
utilize the fact that the legislature has an opportunity to get together and help support that industry or help support, you know, affordable housing or make sure childcare is, are there for essential workers. And so there's interest. And so we've been telling those folks, then you need to talk to your legislators and the legislators you have, uh, uh, relationships with to encourage. And, you know, again, quietly, there's a number of Republican legislators too, that have shot us texts or shot an email to Senator Matherne saying, "I agree with you. We just need them to be public about it." And, and my big question for my friends in the Republican Party is, if we had a Democratic governor, if Tim Matherne was governor, Ryan Taylor, Marvin Nelson, or Shelley Lenz, would they be feeling the same way? And, and I have a feeling that conversation would be different than what we're having right now. Um, and so is it our responsibility as the legislature to appropriate money and to, and to pass statutes? Or is it because we're one party control in a state like North Dakota, we're okay with the situation as it is?
I, I think that might be a part of it. I think that's a fair critique. And it, it bothers me because again, if you're in the legislature, there are certain instances, there's nothing wrong with. I mean, you're, you're, people are Republican or Democrat for a reason. You believe in a certain platform or set of ideas. And so you affiliate yourself that way. And that's fine. There's nothing inherently wrong with it. But if you're a member of a body like the legislature, there are times when you have to set that stuff aside and stand up for your body's role in governance. So if you're the executive branch, you should absolutely fight for executive power, both for yourself and for everybody else who might hold that office in the future. And if you're in the legislature, you have to fight for legislative branch authority, both for your own tenure in the legislature and for every other lawmaker elected to that body after you, Republican or Democrat or Libertarian or weirdo party or whatever it is. You have to do it. And that's, that's not a partisan argument. That is a separation of powers. That is a process argument. And it is important. So I,
Well, and important because that is what our democracy is founded on and is what allowed us to be fairly successful for 250 years.
Yeah.
You know, we have a lot of work to do to become a more perfect union. But part of that work is by having three co-equal branches of government that have friction. That friction produces some good things quite a bit of the time.
And, and frankly stops some bad things at times too.
Correct.
Which is, which is equally important.
Yes.
So, all right, well, Josh, I appreciate your time. Good luck. And by, by the way, the bonding issue, just if we could pause on that for a moment, there are a lot of conservatives, myself included, who have been talking about this for a long time. We have these massive resources. Why can't we invest the Legacy Fund in bonding, right? Why can't we invest it in ourselves and make that bonding process cheaper for things that we're going to build anyway? We're going to build, we got to build sewage treatment plants. We got to build water plants. We got to build streets and schools and, and maintain those things. And a lot of times we're financing them with bonding. If we could finance them ourselves and